Turn it off completely, even when it's unvibrated bothers our sound system. So we ask you to do that, please. Thank you. This evening, we're pleased to have Mayor Pro Tem Wade Fleming do our invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Father, we just love you. We just thank you for this opportunity, Lord, to be here tonight. We just thank you for this wonderful country that we live in, Lord, and we just give you the honor and the glory for all the blessings you've bestowed upon this country, Father. Continue to guide and direct our leadership, Father. Be with us tonight, Lord. We know that you're not the author of confusion, and everything you do is perfectly in order, Lord. And we just pray that tonight, this business will be conducted in an orderly manner, Lord, and in a civil manner, Father. And just be with the decisions that are made tonight, Lord. We know that we've got some difficult decisions to make, Father, but you're in control, and we just praise you for that, Father, and just lift you up. Just pray that everything done tonight will be used to glorify you. Pray with a precious name again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Sure.
May we have the roll call, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Shurley.
Here.
Councilwoman Beldman.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Simmons.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Form present. This evening, we begin with the proclamation in appreciation and celebration of Gorman's 70th anniversary, and so on behalf of council, I'll go down to the front of the presupья. And we have with us the Troy store manager, Jeff Roberts, to receive the proclamation. Seventy years, that's quite an accomplishment.
Well, it's been a long time. We've been in Troy, we've been here, we broke around in 1976, and a lot has changed. The little red schoolhouse was across the street from us.
Right.
K-Mart headquarters weren't even built.
Right.
I had long flowing brown hair and bell bottoms, but the one thing that hasn't changed is our appreciation for the support of the people in the city of Troy, and we hope to continue our great relationship and our commitment to the city and people of Troy from many years to come.
Okay, and I'll give you a chance to, if you want to say something more after I read the proclamation. Okay? Whereas what began in 1940 as a damaged railroad freight goods company founded as Gorman's would become a leader in Michigan's home furnishings scene for decades to come. And whereas with four locations in Troy, Southfield, Novi, and Lakeside, Gorman's has been offering the finest style-leading selection of home furnishings for 70 years. And whereas Bernie Morey, chairman and CEO of Gorman's, purchased the company in 1965, opening Gorman's Contemporary Gallery in Southfield the following year. And whereas in 1977, Morey and his partner, Jeff Roberts, expanded the company with the opening of a store in Troy. The third location in Novi opened in 1995, and its Lakeside store opened in 2000. And whereas through it all, Gorman's has maintained a fine reputation for showcasing some of the most celebrated lines in furniture such as Drexel Heritage, Herdon, and Redon, excuse me, I have some of that, Lexington, Stanley, and a host of others, as well as some of the most talked about designers, including Martha Stewart, Donald Trump, and Ralph Lauren. And whereas the 13 specialty shops featured at Gorman's provide an extensive merchandise assortment for customers from around the world, combined with interior design services at no charge, with professionally trained, experienced designers offering the individualized service that is a distinction at Gorman's. Clients range from new homeowners to entertainers, sports celebrities, to captains of industry, and some just plain folks in the area.
Ninety-nine percent.
Yes, right.
Of course, I guess.
And now, therefore be it resolved, the Troy City Council does hereby congratulate Gorman's on its 70th anniversary and recognize its impact upon the homes here in Troy and surrounding areas. Be it further resolved, the City Council joins the citizens in this community in appreciation and celebration of Gorman's 70th anniversary, and this is presented this 10th day of May, 2010, signed by myself and all the members of council.
I thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Would you like to say a few more words?
Well, I just wanted to thank you for the free commercial.
You're welcome.
And we're so delighted to carve up the city of Troy and look forward to many more years.
Yes, and encourage people to stop by. Of course, at the Troy store, most, like, you know, we know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, this evening, before we begin, our first item is a public hearing, and I encourage
anyone who wishes to speak on the public hearing item, which is the adoption of the budget, that they go out into the hall and sign up in the kiosk to speak. After the public hearing is over and we have the vote on the budget, our next order of business will be public comment. And again, folks that wish to sign up for public comment should sign up at the kiosk so you can call in by name. So with that, we'll begin our adoption of the 2010-11 annual city budget and the three-year budget, 2011-12 and 2012-13. And I'll call upon City Manager, Mr. Zerlik, to begin before we open the public hearing.
Sure. Well, thank you, Your Honor, and members of council. We've gone through study sessions on this matter, budget sessions, and I want to thank you early on for the direction that you had provided city management to pursue in this matter, facing a severe economic challenge over the next several years. Also, I want to thank you for agreeing to adopt a three-year rolling budget, much in line with what Open County does because it's imperative at this point in our history to know where we have to go to meet a declining revenue line.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, do you have questions for management on items that were not covered in our budget study or items that we required? Counselwoman Beldman?
Just one point, Mayor. As we look through, and Mr. Zerlik, I understand that the executive summary verbiage is all yours, and rightfully so. However, it says that the library, museum, community center, and nature center will close after the 10-11 budget year. I think that, and I may be wrong, but it is my understanding that it is the sense of council that those venues will no longer receive a operating subsidy from the general fund. And if that is the concurrent view of council, I would like the verbiage in those executive summaries to be changed to reflect that. I think it's a far different message than "close."
Your Honor?
Yes, Mr. Zerlik?
That's a very good point. All along, the indication was that there would not be a general fund subsidy, and if there was not, based on our extrapolations of revenues and expenditures, those quality-of-life venues would have to close. Of course, I can indicate that should we find revenues that match expenditures, then those venues can remain open. Again, the critical part of the budget is the first year that we're going to adopt. The second critical part is the rolling three-year budget, and we'll take a look and calibrate those numbers essentially every quarter, as was mentioned by Mr. Lamorato at one of our budget sessions. I'll be happy to indicate that, you know, should we find that we can produce a cost-free, if you will, venue, then we'll obviously stay open. And we're looking consistently or constantly at ways to, excuse me, trying to make that happen.
Thank you. I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
Anyone else from council? Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes, question from Mr. Zerlik. I know when we were doing this gate park, we had the North Woodward Community Foundation established to do that, and there was funds that came through parks and rec for that. And I left your message, but I know it was late, so I apologize.
Sure.
But I'm wondering if there's a mechanism that that foundation is still open to funnel funds to park and rec, that people wanted to make donations or make donations to the library or whatever fund, the nature center. Is there a vehicle foundation that would enable that to occur?
I'm sorry to get your message in time.
No problem.
The answer is yes. Again, depending, I don't want to presuppose anything the City Council does. That served me well over my career. But assuming that City Council adopts the three-year budget, I've already spoken with Carol Anderson, our Parks and Rec Director, John Lamorato, our Assistant Manager, and Cindy Stewart, our Community Affairs Director, and indicated that yet this week, in terms of the community center, I will be sending out a letter informing the public of what's going on, and that although there is an indication that the venue will be slated for closure because there is no general fund subsidy, if you will, and we have had subsidies in the past, if we can close that gap, we will, you know, strive to remain open, and any suggestions that we can get from the community, we'll be happy to accommodate any reasonable suggestion. I think that's also one of them, is to have such a vehicle. So the answer is yes.
And Mr. Zerlik, on that same area of note, the funds really have to be sizable sustained funds for certain venues to continue, because it is not a matter of small amounts that are required for these venues.
That's correct. That's because of declining revenue every year.
And in addition to that, revenues have gone down two million more than from what the projections were six months ago. So now it's a $24 million deficit that we're dealing with instead of $22 million deficit over the next five years.
We are mindful that we have to, again, take a look at the revenues that we have and try to find, as you said, a consistent revenue source every year to match our revenue line.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from council? And we'll have an opportunity again, of course, after the public hearing. Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, yes, go ahead.
Okay. I know that this budget is a snapshot in time. It's not cast in stone, and, you know, we're all agreeing that this is a work in process. I know you're continuing to look for areas for cost reductions, for revenue enhancements, and I think that's the major task of this management and this council as we move forward. Not to say this is exactly what's going to happen. It's a snapshot at this point. But we're all tasked with trying to reduce costs, and I'm sure that's going to be on your mind and top priority for you and your staff. And I think there are opportunities, but this, we're just really beginning this process. Although we've been talking about the budget for a while, I think we're just beginning. I know you've got outside consultants working, so as a council member, I'll be anxious to see what we do come up with. And I think there are opportunities, looking at the budget. Don't want to micromanage, but opportunities in departments and in capital costs as well to reduce it. So I look forward to those coming forward.
Mr. Zerlik?
Very good point. In fact, where we're going next is the community center and public works.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselman, if you're ready, I'll open the public hearing. Call on those that have signed up to speak, and we have Gordon Shepke who signed up to speak.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak tonight. One of the things that I was hoping that we'd hear a little bit more, because these numbers are kind of a razzle-dazzle to the average taxpayer in Troy when you look at it, it's really hard to comprehend really what we're up against. The main thing I'd like to urge the council is to just live within our means. We're all having trouble right now, and there's a lot, I won't say everybody, I mean, small businesses in the area. We don't want to do anything to fracture our infrastructure any more than it already is. I live on a reduced pension right now, too, because, and I'm sure there's several others the same way. I don't understand this budget that much, because, like, you take the library, for instance, it's in three different places where these fundings are coming out of, so it's really hard for me to talk intelligently on it. I would just like to urge the council to, as this budget is formulated, whether it's pension fund deficits or whatever, the markets are going up, the markets are going down, and things are in a state of flux and changing. So some areas we're going to win and some areas we're going to lose. But I'd just like to encourage the council to live within their budgets. There's going to be a lot of passionate pleas on one way or another. Everybody's got their favorite cows, and, you know, their sacred cows, but I think that we have to, if there's some areas that I want to participate in and I'm willing to pay extra funding for it out of my pocket, and I'd like to encourage the council to exercise their fiduciary responsibilities in this manner so that all the taxpayers will be represented properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Ellis is the next person that's signed up to speak. Good evening.
My name is Glenn Ellis. I've been a resident of the city of Troy for 14 years, and I appreciate this opportunity to come before the council. And I've never done this before, so thank you for allowing me to come and talk. One of the things I'd like to express is that my family, I have three young daughters, and we're very avid users. We use the library frequently, and so I really appreciate it. That's a great service that the city has provided for many years, and I really appreciate that. My concern was in the budget. My understanding was, as you mentioned, that the library in July, August 2011 is slated to be closed. I appreciate the councilwoman clarifying that the budget will not be providing funding, but maybe it won't close if there are other options. I appreciate you mentioning that. That's one of the things that I was just wondering, if there are other options that have been looked at regarding the funding. It does sound like there is some research into that already, so I really appreciate. Are you looking into that? I just want to add my voice to many out here who really appreciate the use of the library, that there's other ways that we can fund to continue to open that. I would like to participate in something like that, where I can help to fund that issue. Thank you for allowing me to address it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Charlie Lincoln?
Good evening, Mayor, council. I think I know everybody in the council. I'm a Troy resident. I've had it over the years to interview people and participate in the cable television, specifically in Troy. I love living in Troy. It's a great place. I will just be very brief. My understanding is there is a budget item today that has to do with the funding of Community Media Network, and the proposal is to cut the funding from a half percent to a quarter percent. Briefly, the city gets approximately 6% from franchise fees. Not one tax dollar goes to the operation of Community Media Network. Community Media Network is the public service arm, so to speak, of television. Citizens can come and learn how to make television, promote their organizations, both religious functions, nonprofit organizations, et cetera. What is important that under, and there's a lot of benefits about CMN, but I think everybody here pretty much knows about CMN, but I want to say is, if this proposal is cut from roughly $90,000, which is what we get, the city gets about $1 million, the 5%, but there's this 5% that can go to the general fund, and then there's this 1%. Now, under the law, under the FCC and certain interpretations of the law, the 1% must be used for cable functions. And depending on which law you use, federal law seems to say that the 1% must be used for brick and mortar, for capital funding for public or paid, called public educational government funding. There's also something under the Michigan Video Services Act which may expand that slightly, but it must be used for cable services for the city. That's the 1%. Now, right now, there's about $180,000 which represents the 1%. 90 goes to CMN. The proposal on the table is to cut it to 45. I am curious, I guess, as to what the 45 would be used for. It must be used, under the law, at least as I interpret it, for cable. It's got to be cable. It cannot be used for police and fire, general fund, salaries, nothing. It must be used for cable. Now, could it be used for your city channel? I guess it could. That's possible. And if that's the intent of the money, that would be fine. But if that is the intent, then I think what I would invite the council is to ask CMN to perhaps merge or to perform some of the functions that we can do for you. And that would save money, which I think is really the goal here. And so what I'm saying here is that there's no tax dollars, and that's very important, no tax dollars. It's franchise fees. And under the law, the money must go for cable services. The 1%, or the half percent, we get $9,000. Troy is one of the largest cities. I'm happy to say that more residents in Troy of any of the 11 cities that's part of this consortium use Troy. Also, the facility of CMN is located just a couple miles away from here, in the city of Troy. Troy's always been a supporter of CMN, and I trust it still will be. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but consider the alternative for where that money is going. Must be used for cable. I believe that this is an organization that is certainly community-worthy, and in these days of cutting funds and being conscientious of the budget, which we all are, we have made cuts, too. CMN can help promote Troy as well as the other cities. So I would encourage you to keep the funding as is, and I should also say, we have a contract with the ICCA which actually goes to December of 2012, which also provides for that same level of funding. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And that concludes those that signed up to speak on this public hearing. Is there
anyone that did not sign up that wanted to speak? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing, return the item to the council table for further discussion and resolution. We should have a resolution on the table before we have further discussion under our rules now. So if someone would like to move the resolution, and it's not necessary to read all of the files.
I'll move the resolution.
Yes, Counselwoman Kirwan?
As printed.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'll move the resolution as printed and laid before us.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Seconded for discussion.
Moved by Counselwoman Kirwan, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, and discussion. Counselwoman Howard.
The question about the refuse fund, there was some mention by staff in communications with us about a policy, but I don't recall this body actually adopting that policy. Are we going to do that?
Mr. Zerlik?
We spoke about having a policy at our budget session, which is pretty simple. The refuse rate for collecting garbage and rubbish will be commensurate to the cost of collecting garbage and rubbish.
So is that a, is that a staff policy then?
No, it was brought up to the governing body.
No, I understand that, but it wasn't actually adopted. And my question is, would it be your desire, would it be the desire of this body to adopt that policy, or is it kind of a policy by wink and nod?
By adopting the budget, you'll be adopting the policy of having a refuse rate commensurate to the cost of collecting garbage.
At least through the year 2013. Kind of begs the question of what happens after that.
Well, and the other thing is that we had discussed over and over in many sessions about that, that's a rolling budget, and especially going out after this year, the other two budgets. But with costs going up and the predictions of the costs that are there, I think it's important that we cover those costs and that that is set up by state law in a different manner than some of our other funds. Counselwoman Kirwan?
Just to the councilmember's point, I think that we had been talking about for the last, at least the last couple budget cycles, that we were looking for services and fees to match. We had talked about that particularly in terms of park recreation and others. So we really have been moving in that direction for a while. I think that staff has understood that that is our direction, that there may have been a time when we would, in fact, allow more leeway with certain things, and certainly not for the past couple of years have we been doing that. So I don't know whether that was a formally adopted, obviously it wasn't, or the councilwoman wouldn't bring it up, policy, but it is the policy under which we've been operating. So is it, I guess I would then ask the attorney whether it would be recommendable, recommended or advisable that we pass such a policy.
Mrs. Blum?
Certainly, we would appreciate the opportunity to draft something official. I'm not sure if the thought is that you would pass it tonight. You know, certainly we'd like an opportunity to review it, and you do have requirements with the budget as well, and there is a requirement under the charter that it be passed tonight.
Yes, Counselwoman Kirwan?
And again, that might be something we consider when we have that study session, when we're looking at rules, and that could be added to one of the things that we talk about in that study session, so.
About policy. Further discussion or comments on the budget? Any signals here?
Mayor?
Yes, Counselwoman Howard.
Well, yeah, I mean, the reason why, the reason why I bring that up this evening is because I did bring that up, and I think it's a good policy to have so that folks can come and look at the policy and see that as an expectation that, you know, of course the policy can be amended or changed by the governing body, but it certainly hasn't necessarily been the policy of this council in past years to do that. But I think it's important that, especially in light of the election in February, that there be something to explain why, in spite of it, there's going to be an increase in tax rates, and it's simply a document to justify it, and I think would be to our advantage to do so. It would be my preference, actually, to submit that for an advisory vote, but at the very least, I do think that we need to have a very least, I do think that we need to have a guiding document. We have a lot of policies here, so it's really not anything major I'm asking for. So I don't think it needs to be adopted this evening, but hopefully sometime shortly thereafter. The couple, the things I'm going to bring up, quite frankly, are not anything that should be new to anybody who's been around me on council for the last 10 years, because ever since the day I was elected, I thought that the city had too many departments. And I have a major concern because we're having a lot of layoffs of good workers here, good employees, good people who dedicate their lives to the city, and people who I would call line workers, people that the general public interfaces with on a more regular basis. And yet I don't see that pain being shared across the senior levels of management, and I take great discomfort with that. And I believe that, I truly believe that the sacrifices that are going to be made in the city have to be shared, and that means that, and it may indeed involve a tax increase down the road. But so my, I guess to kind of bring this full circle, is this year as well as the previous nine years, I've been looking for a management proposal to reorganize government into a more streamlined function so that we're not nearly as top-heavy as we are. Because as we reduce our workforce, and yet we still have the same organizational structure, then you have more people in management that are managing people, but the people that they're managing are no longer employed by the city, which is somewhat ironic. And John Zerlike's predecessor, Phil Nelson, had the idea of organizing the city government into basically functional areas, and I thought that was a great idea. And unfortunately, he isn't here, and I don't believe that we are going in that direction anymore. And so I see a lot of departments and a lot of very thin departments with department heads, and that's a very expensive proposition for the city. So I do have concern there, and would hope that in the near future, we can look at evaluating that, because that is an area that the citizens necessarily don't interact with or see, and it's something that I think would be making our life a lot easier as we look out onto the budget horizon.
Okay. I'm going to call on Mr. Zerlike to respond, simply because we've had several discussions about combining and reorganizing departments and management people taking on jobs that someone else might be doing now, but that person is still doing that. So Mr. Zerlike, would you just talk about that, please?
Yes, ma'am. We have been in the process of restructuring, making proposals to restructure city government for about the past eight months, and that's when we first realized that we were facing declining revenues and had to have an organization that met that declining revenue line. You can no longer just take money from the general fund, fund balance to balance a budget because we essentially were economically unsustainable. I was telling our city assessor that I used to be afraid to read Stephen King, now I'm afraid to read Iino Lakari's letters to me that talks about the declining value of buildings. He had written to me last week, there were three three-story engineering buildings on Chicago Road, 125,000 square feet, that were purchased for $1 million. That's $8 a square foot. If you were to build that new, it would probably cost about $300 a square foot to build. And you find those prices in Detroit, or Pontiac, or Flint, you don't expect to find them in Troy, but we are. That's how dire we are, and such a need that we have to streamline our organization. We are looking at every department to see whether it's most cost-efficient and effective to either consolidate, eliminate, privatize, or regionalize. And we're going through and doing that, and the final result will be an organization that is streamlined. Some departments have already been consolidated. I'll use the manager's office as an example because that budget is bigger, but when you take a look at previous years and the functions that we are now having, we're down about five full-time people and I think four part-time people for the functions that we perform. Because what I've learned in my experience, and other managers have concurred, is that when you have a function that's service-driven, and you eliminate people that perform that service, oftentimes either the entire service or a remnant thereof stays in place, and someone in the organization has to do it, and that function never goes down in the organization. It always filters or percolates up in the organization to be accomplished. Again, we're looking at different venues. I think that another example of consolidation is the planning department, where we had five full-time people, we're down to a director and a secretary. We did move the code enforcement area over to the planning department. If council agrees to privatize the entire building department, which includes the department director, the planning department will also have a building official out of that department to assist in monitoring the operations. We're looking at the public works department next, and essentially our philosophy now is that if it's maintenance-oriented, whether it's fleet, storm drains, water, sewer, right-of-way parks, buildings, it should all be under one department. And we know that'll help streamline the operation, also unfortunately cut some management positions. We're working on it.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Fleming?
Actually, this was triggered somewhat by Councilwoman Haralik's question, and then I have another piece. When we talk about functions remaining, it is projected in this budget to run the building department with six people, and yet I know that we're also projecting privatizing that building department, and I guess that's the piece that bothers me as much as anything. And I want to know how code enforcement will be handled with a privatized building department because there's no incentive if the fee is based on permit fees. So how are we doing that? What's the plan?
We had bids for privatizing the code enforcement function of the city, and I'll be a few thousand dollars off, but I'll be close. It was about $25,000 higher to go to the, or to stay in-house compared to the private sector. Because code enforcement is really blight prevention and is not an on-demand service, like, I'm going to build a house, I want a building permit, or, you know, we're going to build this street, we need an engineer. Because we want to prevent blight in our community, we thought it would be better to have this non-on-demand service still remain in-house and be separate from the building department and be separate from the private company that would be performing the building department functions. To that end, the plan is to take individuals from the building department that are licensed and place them as code enforcement officers.
So we will keep them, and they will be under?
But they'll be code enforcement, but also have the ability for building inspection.
And as I understand it, those are the people that are going to be supervised in the planning department, or will they be supervised in the building department?
The people that would be transferred, one can be trained to supervise or be the building official, if you will, for the building department, and the building official does not have to be a department head.
Okay, thank you. That brings me to another question, and I've had questions about that this week. With the exception of those departments that we are engaged in discussions to privatize or contract all services, this document does reflect the staff numbers that we actually expect to staff those departments over the next year, with those exceptions of the privatizing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. So if it says there are eight employees full-time and 37 part-time, that's what it's going to be, as far as we know?
Yes, the only exception to that is if someone were to leave by attrition, and that position is slated for being expunged two years hence, we would not.
Right.
Chances are, we would not fill that position.
Thank you.
And for those folks who have not been following the fact that we had three detailed budget study sessions where we went over each of the sections of the budget and inquired about various items that we're doing, then we talked about the three-year budgets. The other two years are not as detailed in this budget, but will be fleshed out for the next one and the next one after that. But it gives folks a blueprint to follow, and I think other communities that are only doing the single-year budgets will start seeing that this is working for Troy, and they're going to be looking at those things too. And so they're going to be seeing their communities coming forward with three-year budgets. I think it's a good idea. I know that for those of you that wanted to follow it more closely, it's been on the, speaking of cable TV, it's been on the cable TV, and it's also on DVD, which you can check out at the library, if you wanted to follow the more detailed discussions of that. We don't mean to imply, because we're not having a lot of detailed discussion now on each and every part of it, that we haven't had that. We have, and I wanted to make that very clear to people. Councilwoman Kirwan?
In terms of streamlining government, as Councilwoman Haralik originally brought up, I think that in the third session, on looking at it as a three-year rolling budget, we began to get a different view. And indeed, there was a flatten at the top in that third year going out that looked remarkably different from what we've been used to. You don't remember that?
I don't remember it. I disagree.
Oh, okay. Well, think, for example, particularly of the police department, where currently you have so many captains and a deputy, and then you don't.
We don't have a deputy.
Well, there will be no.
There's not a deputy?
No.
I'd have to go back to the organizational chart, or perhaps Chief Mayor could indicate how many captains there are in the future?
When Chief Mayor became the chief, he was in the deputy position, and then that position was eliminated.
I think when I saw the chart, it looked significantly different. Was it in terms of captains moving from three to?
We would still have three captains unless one captain retires at this point. If one was to retire, I probably wouldn't replace that captain. The deputy chief position is eliminated, the budget you were going into.
I've got a question for the chief, if I may. Mr. Mayor, and I hate to ask you this question because you may not know the answer right off the top of your head, but I know you can get access to it. If you were to go back to the high point of the police department, which was, I think, 2004 or '05, and the number of command officers we had at that optimum level, what's our projected number of command officers when we're streamlined, if you will, or reduced? Is it a reduction by X percent?
I can give you a rough idea, but I have the figures in my briefcase here.
Rough idea's fine.
We're going from like 37 to 25, or 22, right in that neighborhood there. We're having a significant change in the command officers. We're reducing the number of command officers we have, we have a major reduction in the number of police officers we have also. We'll go from 137 sworn at our optimum down to 93 sworn.
Councilwoman Kirwan, did that answer you?
It does. It seems strikingly, especially on the third budget session, when you could see it laid out. It's one thing to read it, and of course, all of our citizens can go ahead and look online and see them as numbers, different people as numbers. But then when you have that organizational chart, I think it really hit home on what a dramatic change we're facing. So I did see that, and internalized that at that.
Okay, other comments or questions from Council on the budget?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Haralik?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on something the city manager said, and I want to see if I can get a better grasp on these numbers. The, on, I believe it was April 5th, when we were discussing the building department functions, we were provided some revenue and expenditure numbers for that department. And could you tell me if those expenditures included the code enforcement section?
Mr. Lamorato can.
Mr. Lamorato?
Mayor and City Council, the building department inspection services did not include any of the code enforcement. That has already been moved out, even in this current fiscal year. Those functions are moved out under planning, and those are contained in the planning budget for next year.
All right, so what you're saying is these are direct expenses only related to the building, basically the building section?
Yes, in the building discussion department, $960,000, that was all strictly building inspection.
Okay, that's what I thought, because there's not really a revenue stream, per se, with code enforcement. Is that correct? I mean, other than?
That's true. Other than, other than we do get some reimbursement for apartment inspections, other than that, it's all borne by the general fund.
Okay.
Mayor Podem Fleming, I believe you're next.
Thank you. I'd just like to follow up on the comments made by Mr. Lincoln relative to Community Media Network. And I know that we decided at the last meeting, the last study session, to reduce from a half percent to one quarter percent, and I know that was done hastily, right at the end of the meeting. But my question is, do we have on our radar, short-term, to look into the cost of, our internal cost of doing the city functions and the videos that we do, compared to what Community Media Network could do? I mean, it's a cost savings. I know we're looking at a lot of different departments, but I know I've been there, you've been there, the very first-class operation, and I'm just wondering if they could do some of the same functions. He indicated that they could. I'd like to see us take a look at that short-term, see if there might be some cost-saving opportunity.
We'll be happy to take a look at anything, and the way the budget is structured with essentially our eliminating the Community Affairs Department, but keeping Mrs. Stewart essentially half-time in the manager's office and half-time in the police department because we are having a retirement in the public information officer in that venue. There's certain things that CMN can do and certain things that CMN cannot do, and so any bid that we take from CMN has to be taken within the context of our entire communication process that we have with Mrs. Stewart. But we'll be happy to take a look at that piece of it.
Okay, further comments, questions? Ready for the vote?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Haralik?
I have another question regarding the community groups, and the, it looks like, if I'm not mistaken, the community groups are looking at, what, a 50% reduction approximately this year?
Yes.
The larger contributions were, the smaller contributions did not have any hits.
Right. And is it our intent to phase that out on?
Yes, or next year?
And just so I can be up to speed on that, is the theory there to give the groups time to adjust to the, okay. I think one thing also that perhaps the city can do, and, or at least we can look into, is see if there's some promotion that we can do on their behalf to, you know, in the water bill or something to that effect, so that, you know, citizens may want to voluntarily assist them as well, so.
We'll be happy to do that.
Mr. Bartholomew?
Mayor Shulley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bellamy?
No.
Fleming?
No.
Haralak?
No.
Kirwan?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slaver?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Haralak?
Could I have a parliamentary, parliamentarian ruling on the effect of that resolution insofar as there's a transfer of the budget stabilization, which requires a supermajority vote?
Actually, that would not be a parliamentarian, that would be a charter clarification, and I would defer that one to the city attorney.
Mrs. Blom?
Mayor, the budget is a majority vote only, so as far as the portions of the resolution that are dealing with the budget, that is approved. The question was?
The question was whether there was a supermajority vote required for a portion that? Councilwoman Haralak?
It is, yeah. It's kind of a little messy at this point, I think.
Yeah, it does require five votes under, under our charter.
Which section?
If I may, Mayor, I think it's actually the ordinance that was adopted to establish the Budget Stabilization Fund.
Section 8.5 Transfer of Appropriations.
The Budget Stabilization Fund?
The charter provision is Section 8.5 Transfer of Appropriations, which does require five votes, affirmative votes.
So are you contending that we need to have something done with that? We use the money from the Budget Stabilization Fund. We had discussions of this all through the budget hearings, I mean, the study sessions, but we were not, we never talked about that. Mr. Zerlay? Or Mr. Lamarrado?
Let me first ask, how much is allocated from the Budget Stabilization Fund?
Three hundred, three hundred thousand.
Well, does it look like we have to take out three hundred thousand dollars of our revenues and cut three hundred thousand dollars of our, out of our expenditures, then? I don't think so. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Slater?
I believe the motion fails.
Mrs. Blum, are you contending that the four-three vote fails because that portion was in there?
I'm going to defer to a parliamentarian as far as how to handle this, because I think that there are two sections of it. There's one section that deals with the appropriations portion. There's another portion that deals with the budget. And I believe that Ms. Bartholomew will be able to provide some guidance as to whether a motion for reconsideration or an additional motion is appropriate.
Would it be appropriate for us to take a break so that you could talk about this and take a ten-minute break and come back?
Just take a? Either that, or I can give you some insight. Because the nature of the question is commingling two different votes necessary for passage, we really do need to divide that question. But in order to divide a question, we're going to have to identify which portions require the five votes and which portion requires the four. At that point in time, we would need to do a confirmation vote and separate them out, and then you would vote on the two different questions. So we do need to separate those and identify them at this time.
Okay. So how much time is needed for that?
I would have to look at Mr. Lamarrado.
Mr. Lamarrado?
Mayor and City Council, I'd have to look back, because I believe in all our discussions, and there may be some votes that said that we would allocate three hundred thousand over the next five years. I would have to look at the minutes and see if there were any actual votes on that. If there were, then I don't think it matters as part of this here. That this is fine. That's what the budget was based on. It would not have been based on it, other than council direction, to use three hundred thousand dollars a year for the next five years. So we'll have to take a look at that. And if there isn't any motion or any resolution on that, then we'll have to find three hundred thousand to remove from the budget, which is up to City Council.
So are you suggesting that it be on next week's agenda, or that we can do it this evening? Mr. Zerlay?
I could spend five minutes with John. We could come up with three hundred thousand dollars.
Council, do you want to take a ten-minute break till? Yes, Councilwoman Bellamy?
The charter requires us to have this squared away by the third week in May. And I would sooner see management do the same degree of due diligence on this that they've done on everything else, and bring it back to us next week.
Mr. Lamarrado, I see you signaling?
Yeah, if we could, I'd like to just have a few minutes to look over past minutes to see if this was. And I think it may be able to be remedied tonight by having a resolution put forward to do the three hundred thousand.
Okay. I'm going to call for a recess till eight forty-five, and that will give the students a chance, they can sign their forms and take a break.
We seem to have our answer ahead of time, so it's not eight forty-five, it's only eight thirty-nine. But we'll be, it's eight forty-three on the computer, I guess we'll go with the computer time. So we're back in session and we have some answers. Mr. Zerlag? Who do we, who you'd like me to call on?
I'd like you to call on Mr. Lamorato to explain this, please.
Okay. Mr. Lamorato?
Mayor and City Council, there was a resolution for adoption of revenue enhancements. And within that, there were a whole slate of various revenue enhancements that could be used and incorporated in the general fund section of operating budgets. And the very last one states to utilize approximately two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars from the Budget Stabilization Fund. That was on a six to one vote.
And that was in February of two thousand nine?
Two thousand nine.
Okay. Mr. Bartholomew, are you signaling?
I can give you a clarification. Because there is no longer any conflict within the resolution, it does not need to be separated for every vote. So it is fine as stands.
Mayor?
Counselman Harlack?
I guess I'll be the fly in the ointment, not because I want to be, because I would like to move on. But this resolution was from February of oh-nine, which preceded the two thousand nine, two thousand ten fiscal year. And the wording implies that it's a one-off, because it says use two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. I'm refreshing my memory, but did we have a resolution of this nature prior to the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven fiscal year, which would have come up sometime after June of two thousand nine?
Do we have another resolution?
No.
Mr. Zerlag?
Not to my knowledge, no.
No?
Well, anyway, I'll just take the minority position that this is not adequate.
So we have a ruling from the clerk and the attorney? Yes, Ms. Blum?
Mayor, I just wanted to, I mean, I just want to point out that it does say utilize approximately two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars from the Budget Stabilization Fund. So it's not the three-hundred thousand dollars, but I did want to make sure it's approximately. So there is, you know, it, I just want to make sure that council was clear on that. There is this resolution from two thousand and nine. It does not specifically limit it to the two thousand and nine year. I've read through the resolution and there is no year limitation on it.
The last where, whereas has now therefore been resolved, the Troy City Council hereby adopts the following list of revenue enhancements and expenditure reductions that will be incorporated in the general fund sections of the operating budget. And the last one listed, of course, was from the Budget Stabilization Fund. So, Mrs. Bartholomew, on the vote, the four-three vote?
For clarification, what are you asking?
I'm asking if it passes with that four-three then?
Yes.
Okay, for the, for the general public, because, you know, they're listening to all of what's going on.
Actually, what the mayor or the chair rules is how it stands unless it's challenged. And then your option would be to offer another motion and move down to the other path. But it's, as you will state, is how it will go.
All right. Motion passes then with this additional information?
Mayor?
Counselman Harlack?
Yeah, I guess all I was asking for is if we could just have, you know, even a resolution next week, just so that it would be a lot cleaner, not for the budget, but for the, just to ratify that transfer. But that's just my position. I think it'd be a lot cleaner, because there's such a tremendous time between these two resolutions.
Madam Mayor?
Your Honor, I'd like direction on that. I'd like direction from the governing body on that issue from Mr. Harlack, please.
Madam Mayor?
Counselman Beltrame?
That's where I was going, is the three-year budget requires money from the Budget Stabilization Fund each of those years. And I'm comfortable that we gave Phil direction before you got here to do that. And so I would like it if management would prepare a resolution for next week that would say, as long as we are able, if necessary, we will take approximately three-hundred thousand dollars from the Budget Stabilization Fund each year to assist in balancing the operational budget.
Would that resolution then take effect July first, two thousand and eleven?
No, I think it would take effect this year.
Then what would happen if the budget passed on a four-to-three vote and the policy that's subsequent to it would fail?
This, all right, then start at the eleventh, of eleven. I don't care. If that's of concern to you, it's not of concern to the attorney. So if it's of concern to you, word it that way. But if you want direction, we're perfectly willing to give you that direction, is my point.
My point was that the attorney indicated that there wasn't a date specific for fiscal year ten-eleven. But when the issue became expanded to include ratification of using budget stabilization monies, my question then became different than what was asked of the attorney. And that was, what if you passed a budget on a four-three and then had a ratification that failed for the year that you approved a budget?
Well, and the whole point is that as we sat through discussions and talked about it as a council, we said we need to use the money from the Budget Stabilization Fund. And everyone said they agree. We all said that. So, you know, I think you already had your direction. I mean, it was, it was not a question of some were in favor, but some were not. It was absolute necessity. That's why the fund was set up in the first place.
I'm not arguing, Your Honor, I'm just trying to get clarity. Sometimes with seven people with different perspectives, it's hard to laser in on a resolution. So I'm going to ask again, what do you want me to do, as a governing body?
I don't feel that we need a resolution, but, Counselman Slater?
I don't think we do either. I've heard from the attorney, I've heard from the city clerk. I'm satisfied that what was done in the last resolution is adequate to move forward. And I think we should just go ahead and move forward.
Anyone else? You're pining too? Okay. All right. Then we need to move on to our next section of the agenda. And that is the public comment section. And we did have some people sign up on this. And that is Scott Foster was the first one. And I see that Scott's still here. Come on. Oh.
Good evening. My name is Scott Foster. I am a proud Troy schools graduate, big Troy fan, and also board member of the Troy Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the Troy Chamber, we would like to extend our gratitude for you being so committed and so proactive and good stewards of the Troy community. Thank you.
And County Commissioner Bob Gossen was here earlier and signed up to speak next. And he had to leave. So I'll just call the council's attention to the brochure that was put on the table by him. And I'll send it down to staff, too. It is about the prescription drug collection days for the, that they're doing, they're doing that program. And he was going to speak about it, but had another meeting. And so I thought I'd just mention to you all that's here. I'll send this one down to Mr. Zerlag. And next we have Donald Chang who signed up. Want you to pass that to...
Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, Mr. Zerlag, two things. First, I'd like to direct everybody's attention to the Kurnish of Troy today and remind you all that on Monday, the thirty-first of May at eleven o'clock, we will once again honor all servicemen and women who have fallen in combat at our Memorial Day ceremony right out front of City Hall at eleven AM. And it would really be nice to see all of you there this year. Our speaker is Captain Brad Caton, who was a participant in a ceremony here just a month or so ago. The second thing I'd like to do is to remind you all of something Sir Winston Churchill said. In his history of the Second World War, he talked at great length about the courage and valor of the citizens of the British Isles as they resisted the onslaught of the Nazi regime in the early nineteen forties. And at the conclusion of the Battle of Britain, he reminded all that it was not the end, nor was it the beginning of the end, but just the end of the beginning. And the budget that you've just approved for this year and succeeding two years of guidance is just that. It is the end of the beginning. There is a tremendous amount of hard work for everybody to do, both elected and the electorate, in order to keep this city, the city that we all want to be members of. And I encourage all of you now to redouble your efforts on behalf of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that didn't sign up for public comment? Okay, that concludes that. Then we'll go on to the regular business. And we have a postponed item. That is standard purchasing resolution three, the exercise renewal option of the concrete pavement repair. We had some questions, and I see we have two here now, except for one of the companies. The others we do. It was moved by Councilwoman Kirwin and seconded by Counselman Slater. Is there further question on this item? Okay. Yes. Mayor Pocatelle Fleming?
I'm still not comfortable that the one construction company can only provide a one-year maintenance agreement. The other few can do two years. So I have a concern that they say it's because of the cost of the bonding, but the other two companies can do it. And I have a concern awarding business to a company that can only provide a one-year maintenance agreement. One vote.
So are you...
I can't support that. I need to.
Mr. Zerlag, you want me to call Mr. Miller?
Please.
Yes, Mr. Miller?
Unfortunately, that one company was unable to do it based upon his union contracts. And that company was just unwilling to do that at this time without going out to a complete rebid process, which would probably bring in higher, which would bring in higher prices. So unfortunately, that's where we stand right now.
Further comments or questions on this one? The vote, Mr. Bartholomew?
Counselman Beltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
No.
Harlack?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Motion passes. And then we go to regular business, the bid waiver for workers' compensation insurance renewal for fiscal years two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. We have a resolution. It's for the, it's through the Michigan Municipal League, which saves us lots of money.
Madam Mayor?
Counselman Beltrame?
Whereas the Michigan Municipal League has provided workers' compensation insurance for the city of Troy, and the premium charged has been equitable based on the city's experience. And whereas it is desirable to continue the program through the Michigan Municipal League due to the positive experience of participating in the MML program, therefore, be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby waives formal bidding procedures and hereby approves the net estimated premium cost of two hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars for workers' compensation insurance through the MML for the two thousand and ten, eleven fiscal year.
Support.
Moved by Counselwoman Beltrame, seconded by Mayor Pocatelle Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Counselman Fleming?
Yes.
Harlack?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Counselman Beltrame?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the approval of the Troy Downtown Development Authority proposed fiscal year two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven budget. We have a resolution?
Madam Mayor?
Counselman Beltrame?
Whereas the Troy Downtown Development Authority has adopted and recommends that City Council approve its proposed fiscal year two thousand and ten budget. Therefore, be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby approves the Troy Downtown Development Authority's annual budget for fiscal year July one, two thousand and ten, through June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven. Support.
Moved by Counselwoman Beltrame, seconded by Counselwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion?
Mayor?
Counselman Harlack?
Just my annual disclaimer about the Downtown Development Authority and the one that comes after this, I'll mention it as well. But the, you know, I certainly don't argue with paying for the bonds. My major concern has actually been reduced to, I believe, about a hundred thousand dollars right now. And that's operating expenses, I believe, would be the, actually, that's one thing. And the other thing is the fact that when there's a development plan, the DDA is not required to run that by council anymore. They have the final authority. And so I don't, I don't like city expenditures being diverted into unelected bodies. So that's my disagreement with the DDA. So anyway, I will vote no.
Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Counselman Harlack?
No.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Counselman Beltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. And next is the approval of the Troy Local Development Finance Authority, LDFA, proposed fiscal year two thousand and ten, eleven budget.
Madam Mayor?
Counselwoman McGinnis?
Whereas the Troy Local Development Finance Authority has adopted and recommends that City Council approve its proposed fiscal year two thousand and ten, eleven budget. Therefore, be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves the Troy Local Development Finance Authority's annual budget for fiscal year July first, two thousand and ten, through June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven.
Second.
Moved by Counselwoman McGinnis, seconded by Counselwoman Beltrame, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion?
Mayor?
Counselman Harlack?
And the Local Development Finance Authority is another body that diverts tax dollars to, and it diverts tax dollars and spends it in ways that I don't think is in the best interest of the city. So I will be voting no on this as well.
Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Counselman Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Counselman Beltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Harlack?
No.
Motion passes. H six proposed Troy City Code Ordinance Amendment to add new provisions relating to commercial motor carriers, Chapter one oh six, traffic.
Madam Mayor?
Counselman Beltrame?
And I'll move the resolution, but I also would state that any editorial changes that are needed for formatting or whatever should be approved. Resolve that the Troy City Council hereby adopts an ordinance to amend Chapter one oh six, traffic, of the Troy City Code to add new provisions relating to... Traffic, of the Troy City Code to add new provisions relating to commercial motor carriers by adding Section 11, including Sections 11.1 to 11.18, and Section 12, including Sections 12.1 to 12.20, as recommended by city administration, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we approve the resolution. Do we need to have the wording in about editing or format changes? Mrs. Bartholomew?
Actually, it's not necessary. It's not changing the substance of the ordinance.
Thank you. When we get to the next one, I know we have a paper on the table. Okay, the vote?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Harlack?
Yes.
Kerrwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Call council's attention. H seven is on the table with a change. And so, the person who moves the resolution, if they would move it with the change, added city manager in before mayor and city clerk, which always is there for executing the documents anyway. Councilwoman Kerrwin?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves the Energy Efficiency and Conservation LED Demonstration Grant Number VES-10-048 in the amount of $250,000 between the City of Troy and the Department of Energy, Labor, and Economic Growth with purpose of installing light emitting diode LED products at the transit center, had no cost to the city, and hereby authorizes the city manager, mayor, and city clerk to execute the documents, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerrwin, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrameen, that we approve the resolution as was read and is on the table. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Harlack?
As luck would have it, we're just working through a bunch of things that I'm vehemently opposed to, and the transit center is one of them. And I'm not going to reargue the case there, but it would be foolish of me to vote in favor of another government giving this government money to spend on behalf of a project that I think is inherently wrong to spend money on, at least by the government body at this time. And it certainly is going to be a boom and a hunk, but I certainly hope for the best.
Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Slater?
Yes. Excuse me, yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Harlack?
No.
Kerrwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. And the consent agenda. Council, do you want any items to be removed? Seeing none, could we have a resolution approving all the consent agenda items? Councilwoman Kerrwin?
That all items resolved, that all items as presented on the consent agenda are hereby approved as presented.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerrwin, seconded by Councilwoman Harlack, that we approve with this vote all the agenda, consent agenda items.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Clarify that that includes the changes laid on the table?
Right. Well, I'm just going to say that the changes that are laid on the table, yes, thank you for catching that. Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes, ma'am.
Fleming?
Yes.
Harlack?
Yes.
Kerrwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Excuse me, I apologize. Next, we have a council referral. Mayor Protem Fleming has an item that is on here.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Item K one. I requested that the staff and our librarian, Kathy Guss, put together this resolution that we would ask the state of Michigan, which provides state aid to the library. One of their criteria is that the library operates 55 minimum hours, and if they serve a population of 50,000 or more. And with the budget constraints that we're having now, and I think other cities are having well, obviously, we need to have that number reduced. I mean, I think that that requirement is very burdensome on the library, and I'm sure there are other things as well, but I'd like to see us ask the state, this resolution is supposed to do that, to change that criteria and reduce that 55 hours. Right now, if we don't keep the library open 55 hours, then we lose support that we desperately need from the state. And I think it's just a requirement that's, you know, outdated at this point.
Madam Mayor.
Do you want to, may I have the resolution?
No.
Don't you want to move it yet?
No.
I thought maybe he wanted to move it.
I can move it.
And then we'll get it on the table and discuss it. Could we?
Sure.
Okay. Moved by Councilwoman Fleming. Do we have a second? Moved by Mayor Protem Fleming, seconded by Councilman Slater. Councilwoman Beltrameen, discussion.
I wanted to ask that we postpone action on this because I think that there are ways we can beef this up other than to have it say, "We're running out of money. Please let us be open less," because I think every, all 535 cities in the state can say that, at which point the state librarian is going to throw up her hands and say, "I can't give everybody a waiver, so what am I to do now? Turn them all down?" Would be the knee jerk. And I say that because, as I understand it, the rules that govern this 55 minimum hours were originally put forth 30 years ago, or some such thing, at least 20. Since that time, the Internet has been a huge part of not only city government, but library services. And if we know that of the hundred, or 1.3 million visits, if you will, to the library, half of them come over the Internet. And if we know what percentage of our collection is reserved online, and that's significant, there may be a measure by which we can say, "Give us credit for these sorts of interactions and reduce our requirement by a commensurate percentage," as opposed to, "You decide if you're going to give us a waiver." I think that we can make a better case if we work a little bit on this. I think it's a great idea to ask her to change the rules, absolutely. But I think we can make a better case than this resolution.
Okay. Further discussion? I saw some signal going on over here. I don't know whose first. Councilman Slater?
Go ahead.
And then Councilwoman Kerr.
I think, I think it's a good idea also, and I would ask to postpone it also, because I think it's important to address that 70-hour issue that we had an agreement possibly to share with another city, but because of some silly 70-hour total between the two cities, which is impossible for the librarian to work 70 hours, in my opinion, I think it's ridiculous. And we're talking about partnerships today with all kinds of things, and I think it's important to get that in there also.
Councilwoman Kerrwin?
I'm just wondering about the form of resolution. I know that there had been talk after the study session or around the study session about this being an issue. I didn't know whether this is just going to the state librarian, or I can't tell whether it's going on to others in government. However, I think a letter, or face-to-face dialogue, or a group of folks going up to have a meeting oftentimes can yield better results than simply sending off resolutions. Personally, that's how I feel about resolutions for the most part. I'd rather have a dialogue where you can reach an equitable solution together. So that's kind of my issue in looking at it. Is it just going to this one person? Then why wouldn't we write a letter, which would include all of the information? So perhaps...
Okay. Well, I think, I think that the combination of those things, sometimes people like to have the formality of a resolution for them, but I think the discussion of the letter's fine. But I just want to indicate for people from friends of the Troy Public Library and others out there that have commented to us about keeping the library open more, over more years than is projected by the monies, that, again, this resolution will not be bringing in the sustainable amount of money that we need in order to keep the library functioning at a level that people would like to see it function in. So I have to caution people that even though, you know, there's some combination of working with other cities with this and those kinds of things, still, the money is a factor. And so, I always need to keep bringing that up because I don't want to give false hope to people that this resolution is going to save the day. Mr. Zerlag?
I believe you're correct, Your Honor. This, I think, is probably more of an altruistic resolution for other communities, given the fact that we need $4 million to keep our library open and don't have it.
Right.
But I think that our librarian can speak more on that matter. If this resolution passed tomorrow, would it help the Troy Library?
If this resolution passed, it's my understanding from the resolution itself, as directed by Councilwoman Fleming, is that it would be sent to the state librarian for her consideration. So I don't know that I can answer that question because it depends on the decision of the state librarian.
Let's pretend she says yes.
If she says yes, what that means is for the next year, if the Troy Library, for whatever reason, had to be open less than 55 hours per week, that she would continue to support giving the Troy Library state aid. That would be approved, and all the benefits that the library receives from state aid would continue.
And we're open how many hours this year? How many hours are we open this year?
Currently, the library is open 65 hours a week.
And then July 1 goes to?
55 hours per week, which is the minimum.
All right. So we're budgeted for 55 hours per week. So if the state said that we can have less than 55 hours per week, what happens July 1, 2011?
On July 1, 2011, it's my understanding that the library is going to not be open.
So regardless of what the state does for the 55-hour reduction, there's no impact on the City of Troy Library unless we find $4 million.
I think that's a good comprehensive summary.
Thank you.
While, while we're talking about this item, I noted, and you all received the copy of the newspaper article, the Ferndale Library is opening their green building. Their voters in 2007 voted for One Mill to do their library, a much smaller community. And while they were voting to do that for their library, in 2007, Troy voters were voting to take away the authority of the city council to increase the millage, and that it must go to vote of the people. So it was a different type of thinking by two different cities. And the reason that I mention this is that people are comparing apples to apples, and people are saying, "Well, if we don't have our services full-time, they will have to buy a card at," you know, because they do have non-resident cards at some libraries, at those libraries. And other people have said, "Well, they have this small library, and they run it all the time." Well, it's a different-sized community. It's also a different attitude about what, when they voted to do certain things with their funds. But I do note that Beverly Hills, I believe, is no longer going to be able to pay their monies toward the Baldwin Public Library, because Beverly Hills doesn't have their own library, do they?
Beverly Hills contracts, they, they provide a certain amount of money to the City of Birmingham for library service, and that contract is ending fairly soon. I believe that the City of Beverly Hills is going to have a millage in November for library service and possibly some other things. I'm sorry, I don't know that specifically. If it passes, I believe they will continue to contract with the Baldwin Library in Birmingham, and if it fails, they will not.
Okay. So, and the reason that I, that I mention this is that we've had a lot of suggestions from people about things that we can do and can't do here in Troy. And so I want people to keep in mind, and I mentioned it with this resolution, I think that the hours of operation changing, you know, from 55 hours is a step. But again, I don't want to give false hope that this is actually going to, it's not going to bring in the kind of funds that we're going to be needing for the library.
But the amount of funds are negligible. Now, should the city decide at some future point to have a limited library, 20 hours a week, whatever, something like this would benefit.
Right.
But in terms of a full-service library?
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes. I was just looking at it from the perspective of having some library, maybe not a 55-hour library, but to give us the flexibility without losing state funding. If it's a 40-hour library, I'm not sure what it's going to look like, but anything that we can do to reduce the cost and maintain as much library we can, is what we need to do. So what I'm asking here is to, to remove the 55 minimum hours. Not sure exactly what hours we can afford to keep it open, but we need to keep the library open. So it may be 40 hours. It may be 35 hours. I'm not sure. I'm hoping it could be 55, but I don't want to be, not, not try this. This is just one step. There are many steps. This is one step that I'm asking this council to take, to approach the state. And I think we need to broaden it and talk to everybody we can at the state to try to get support behind this, to reduce this 55-hour minimum, because we're, we may need to reduce below 55 hours in order to keep the library open.
Councilwoman McGinnis, I saw your signal.
I didn't know that this was going to be on the agenda tonight. Obviously, it's, it's good that council members are independently trying to come up with solutions that they can put out at the table, and this is where we have those discussions. So I'm not surprised that I'm surprised they say something on the agenda. However, I think, given some of the comments from other council members, it isn't that I would be opposed to this, but I think that there are a couple of things that we need to deal with. One, our own situation here within the city. Two, the fact that we may be dealing with restrictions that are 20-some-years-old. And I think if we're going to move forward and at least put suggestions out there to see what we can work with, because obviously, I think we at least have to have answers to these questions. They may end up being negative answers. They may end up being answers that are not going to provide us any solution that would keep the library operating as a public library. However, I think if we're going to get answers to these questions, we might as well do it in a comprehensive package. So I think if there are other things that we should potentially look into, get updated information, so we can move forward on that issue, it would be more productive for us rather than going forward piecemeal. Obviously, we've been talking about the 55 minimum hours consistently because it's where we've gone for the 2010-11 budget in order to provide services this year. So I think we've been very focused on that, and we haven't really been looking at the comprehensive list of things that you have to deal with and coming to the recommendation that you made to us. So I think before we go ahead and do something tonight, I would rather have us look at those things comprehensively, so then we can figure out our multi-pronged attack, whatever that may be, that will include all of those things. And we'll also include, I think, as Councilwoman Kerrwin accurately, Councilwoman Kerrwin accurately stated, the best way to go forward, because right now, you know, whereas resolutions may have been looked at and taken into consideration, we probably need to do a little bit more than that amidst all the other cities that are going to be clamoring for help in whatever form that takes. So I would be apt to postpone this before taking action tonight.
And I think that was what Councilwoman Beltrameen started with, is the fact that she thought there should be some additional information that be included either in the resolution or with, with the letter. Could we postpone this for one week is enough time, or do we need longer than that? Pardon?
Until staff forwards it again.
Okay. All right. Until it comes forward again after the additional information that folks might suggest, go with it? It might be the, the next meeting on the 17th, or it could be the 1 and 2.
If the staff is prepared.
All right. The staff is prepared. Councilwoman Beltrameen?
I, I would say that, and I see question marks on Mr. Zerlag's face and on Ms. Russell's face. I, I think what council wants to do is... Comprehensive report from staff.
Information that necessary. The vote on the postponement, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarthak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. We have another item, oh, we're going to have council comments, and then we have a closed session here, so. Council comments are next. Anybody have comments?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Beltrameen?
There were several emails going back and forth this week about boards and committees, and meeting quorum particularly, as it pertains to the advisory committee group of senior citizens. And, and I think first, it's, it's important to clarify that whether your term is up or not, all members are allowed, so to speak, to serve until they are reappointed or replaced, either one. So for those members who are not coming to meetings because they think their term expired, you can still serve, your vote is still good, and we would expect you to. But that is one committee we may want to look at, because they have had a death, and that leaves them only one extra for making quorum, based on their requirements. So I, I don't know how you all feel about that, but that was, that we would allow them to make quorum, and they have canceled three meetings in a row, but now that they know that they can serve, let's see what happens next month. But we may have to go forward with some of the plan.
And in the meantime, then, we can schedule our study session, where we talk about what we're going to do in the advisory committee. Okay, any other council comments?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Might we then bring calendars at the next meeting, as we sometimes do, and perhaps I could find a place into the agenda, and we can look at either whether it be Saturdays or multiple Mondays or something, to deal with some of the issues that we keep pushing on. I think it's time.
We stand as a staff, ready to meet whenever you tell us to.
Thank you.
I would prefer to not meet on a Saturday, because I think that people make, especially we're coming to Nice weather, people make plans for going out of town, et cetera, so I would prefer a, a meeting during the week.
In that case, it might take a couple of Mondays, because we have talked about different things. We've talked about boards and committees as one thing, we've talked about our own rules, a code of conduct, code of conduct for others, so.
Right. But we could have it on a, a Monday when we don't have a meeting scheduled, depending on people's schedules, too. And I think we could try to have all members there, but, you know, sometimes we can't. So we could just go ahead and schedule a meeting, and then do what we could do. Okay, any other council comments?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Howarthak?
I just want to personally thank four of my colleagues here on the city council, Maureen McGinnis, Dane Slater, Wade Fleming, and Robin Beltrameen, for the kindness and respect of excusing me when I was at my wedding in, in Australia, which is where my wife's family is from, and where her home is. And I, I do appreciate that, and wanted to specifically thank you, because it means a lot to my wife and I. Thank you.
I want to indicate that whether we excuse or don't excuse, it didn't mean any disrespect at all. It had to do with philosophical difference of whether we need to excuse, or whether we just have present or absent. It didn't have anything to do, it would be the same if I were absent, anyone else were absent here. So I want to make that very clear. It didn't have anything to do with the other. Any other council comments? Councilwoman McGinnis?
Just a quick note, I think when we're just taking a brief recap of the things that we need to set up for some special study sessions, I also think that we discussed it at one of our budget meetings, but we really do need to set up something specifically for our rankings, our output rankings as well, because I think, in terms of priorities, I discussed that some of them will obviously have to be revised in terms of what we're dealing with now. So I think that's important, too, because for the people that do review the documents that we're reviewing as we're going through this process, and for people that do utilize the information that we're trying to provide to the community, they need to see that we're updating that as well, so I don't want there to be any confusion for people that are trying to keep themselves as educated and advised as what's going on in the city as possible.
Yes, and we are going to get the new pages for the budget book, but, you know, not immediately, but if it's a change in policy, or in our wording of our, I think we do have to have a, a resolution on that. Is that right, Mr. Zerlake? You know, we had the three, um, I recall it's not on here anymore. Looking for it.
The goals.
The goals.
We do have to close it.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. I didn't mean to throw you a curve, even though it is baseball. Okay. Anybody want to move the resolution for closed session? Councilwoman Kerwin?
Be resolved, Troy City Council shall meet in closed session, as permitted by MCL 15-268E, pending litigation, Mary Ann Henney versus City of Troy et al.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Howarthak, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howarthak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Motion passes. So then we're in recess, and we'll leave, and then the closed session.